...increment for our employees. Ms. Chastain?
Thank you so much, Mayor. So these were the anniversaries for Sep-- we had one for September. I didn't want him to be a loner, so I said, "Well, I'm gonna go ahead and include October anniversaries at this meeting as well." And as fate would have it, we have-- a lot of these are out with different stomach bugs and flu and things going around. We've got a lot of our staff right now that are under the weather. So we do have one person here who's one that we'd like to recognize. With our Parks and Recreation Department, we have Patrick Riccardi, 10 years of service.
All right.
All right. Thank you so much, Patrick. And, uh, speak.
He's pretty quiet.
I want to thank y'all for the opportunity. I've known a lot of times, I've been through and I've had fun working with my coworkers. That's it.
Thank you, Dan Gray. Thank you so much.
The other ones that-- the other servicing anniversaries that we have, we have Corporal St. Frederick with the Police Department. We'll make sure we get him his certificate of pen. Emmanuel, or he had 15 years. Emmanuel Howard with the Golf Course, five years of service. Maverick Stockdale with the Fire Department, 15 years of service. And Henry Edmund with the Utilities Department, 15 years of service. So we'll make sure we get them and tell them thank you for all they do.
And thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Hunter and Stephanie, so much. This is really a highlight because that's where the rubber meets the road with our employees who's out there giving it day in and day out and actually, under the circumstances, is doing an outstanding job as it was alluded to yesterday at our meeting by our council. Things seem to be getting better, but we're not out of the woods. We're still down with employees, so just bear with us. But the ones that are coming in day after day and sucking it up and not moaning and groaning and complaining for being able to do a good job, and we can't thank them enough. So thank you all. Thank you, Patrick, and we hope you do at least 15 more. At least. Thank you so much. Proceeding on now, council, under the City Clerk's, the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes, we will take these separately as we discuss due to the fact that one of our council member was not at one of the meetings, our council meeting. So with that being said, we will take these separately. So at this time, council, I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of the September the 19th work session. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. We have the motion in the second. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now proceeding on, council, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes for the September the 20th council meeting. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Bailey. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Okay, we have the motion in the second. At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Epstein.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, council, under City Council, at this time, I would like to ask you all, council, if there's any unfinished business or discussion. Okay, since there's not any, we will proceed on with the resolutions. And on our resolution under administration, we have a resolution in reference to the satisfaction of a special assessment on property located at 315 Seal Road, Robert James and Naomi Cook owners. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas Resolution Number 2012-47, adopted on the 22nd day of February 2012, affixes the cost for the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 315 Seal Road, Phoenix City, Alabama, owner being Robert James and Naomi Cook. A special assessment was filed against the property taxes in the amount of $3,797.76 to be collected by the Russell County Revenue Commissioner. Said special assessment having been recorded in Volume 87, Page 311, in the office of the Judge of Probate of Russell County. And whereas the full amount of $8,424.57, which is a $3,797.76 plus interest of $4,626.81, was paid to the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, on September the 13th, 2022, and special assessment is entitled to be removed. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby constitute and appoint the Judge of Probate of Russell County, Alabama, as its true and lawful attorney, for and in its name to enter in the margin of the records where said special assessment is recorded, full satisfaction thereof, hereby ratifying and confirming any and all acts of said attorney in fact in and about said premises. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Revenue Commissioner of Russell County to release said special assessment placed on property. Passed, approved, and adopted this fourth day of October 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we have all heard the resolution. I would at this time like to ask for a motion. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Any comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And council, next, under administration, is a resolution in reference to reappointing Senior Municipal Court Judge. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas F. Patrick Lofton's term of office for Senior Municipal Court Judge commenced on November the 1st, 2020, and expires on October the 31st, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that F. Patrick Lofton be reappointed as Senior Municipal Court Judge for the City of Phoenix City Municipal Court for a term beginning November the 1st, 2022, and set to expire October the 31st, 2024. Passed, approved, and adopted this fourth day of October 2022.
Okay. Council, each of us have heard the resolution. At this time, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Any comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, we do have, under administration, a resolution in reference to reappointing Assistant Municipal Court Judge. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas Greg Waldrop's term of office for Assistant Municipal Court Judge commenced on November the 1st, 2020, and expires on October 31st, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that Greg Waldrop be reappointed as Assistant Municipal Court Judge for the City of Phoenix City Municipal Court for a term beginning November the 1st, 2022, and set to expire October 31st, 2024. Passed, approved, and adopted this fourth day of October 2022.
Okay. Thank you again, Mrs. Lee, for reading the resolution. And council, we've all heard the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Any comments or discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, council, on the Economic Development and Planning Department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to make application for grant assistance from the Alabama Tourism Department to support freestyle kayak world cup competition and festivities. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City is committed to hosting successful tourist events. And whereas the City of Phoenix City and Uptown Columbus are hosting the International Canoe Federation World Cup between September the 30th and October the 9th, 2022. And whereas the Alabama Tourism Event Grant has a $6,500 grant available for tourism events. And whereas the City of Phoenix City will use these funds to offset the cost of fencing, lighting, and food. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the filing of said application, including all understandings and assurances contained therein, and directs and authorizes its mayor and city manager to act in connection with the application and to provide such additional information to the Alabama Tourism Department as may be required. Passed, approved, and adopted this fourth day of October 2022.
Okay. Thank you again so much. Council, we have all heard the resolution. I would at this time like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Any comments or discussion?
Just a brief comment, if I may, Mayor. We got the latter part of this week with these festivities that's coming. It's gonna make a significant impact here in our community. If we can get someone just to elaborate on the reason why we're applying for this grant and also to leverage off of that to help us get, you know, find these events that's coming up with the competition that's going on.
Mr. Colick?
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Johnson, thanks for asking. I appreciate that. So for the public to know, we've advertised this to some degree prior to this so that we get participation from the public. But we actually applied for this, for this event in 2019. So we were awarded the 2022 ICF World Cup and the 2023 ICF World Championships. And so as part of that, we recognize that there's a lot of people that know what freestyle kayaking is, but there's also a large portion of people that don't really know what it is. So we wanted to make sure we were inclusive as possible and capitalize the best way possible so that we're putting on the actual kayak event, but in conjunction with that, we have a week-long combination of activities that will happen. And most of them will be towards the next weekend. So next Saturday's gonna be the major event. There's music and activities and car shows and lots of stuff going on in and around the competition. This grant in particular focuses specifically on one social that we're hosting on Wednesday night. So we're actually, you guys are aware that we started a documentary last year of something we call the Wintering Grounds, which is this nomadic campground where a lot of these kayakers come and live during the wintertime so they can actually kayak in the river during the winter months. And so we started a documentary and they've done a short, about a 22-minute short, where we're actually gonna host all of the campers that are staying on campground. And those are folks from Ireland and Poland and Great Britain and all across the United States. Japan is a part of that as well. So it's a really diverse, really cool group of folks that are staying in the campground that we're gonna host and show the actual screening of the documentary. So these funds are specifically going towards that component of the overall event. So the overall event budget is much, much greater. But this specific event will be what this grant will be used for. So we're excited to be able to build a platform. And we're thankful to Representative Blackshear for presenting it to us as an opportunity. So and also thankful to the Alabama Department of Tourism for presenting it as well.
All right, Sean, will you elaborate on for our citizens of Phoenix City to let them know that Phoenix City will be on the world stage at that?
Absolutely. So the World Cup competition is kind of a sufficient preemptive event towards the World Championships, so a smaller one essentially. This one, we have 100 athletes in 16 different countries represented, anywhere from, I mentioned, Great Britain and Ireland. They're all over the place. So it's really cool to see a lot of the languages that are mixing and mingling in our area. So the world stage is certainly correct. And what we expect is because the river is as good as it truly is, it's a fantastic river for the sport. So we expect that not only will we experience people during these competitions, we expect them that they'll probably come back from time to time during the year to be able to train in it because it's great to learn now. There's really only a couple other rivers that they can participate at this level in the entire world. So we, the world stage is probably standing likely. It really certainly is. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Colick? Thank you. Ms. Johnson? Ms. Day? Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, council, next, on the Economic Development and Planning Department, is a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to accept proposal from KPS Group Incorporated for the Comprehensive Plan Update, Zoning Ordinance Update, Subdivision Regulation Update, and Design Guidelines Services in an amount not to exceed $177,260. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Phoenix City is committed to the orderly and efficient growth management of its city. And whereas the City of Phoenix City has a 2014 comprehensive plan, and the time has come to update that plan. And whereas the City of Phoenix City has a zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations that are also in need of updating. And whereas these regulations should be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And whereas KPS Group Incorporated prepared the City of Phoenix City's zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. And whereas KBS Group Incorporated is duly capable of preparing the comprehensive plan and updating the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations and preparing design guidelines. And whereas the cost of the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance update, subdivision regulations update, and design guidelines is $177,260. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to accept the proposal and sign all documents from KPS Group Incorporated for the Comprehensive Plan Update, Zoning Ordinance Update, Subdivision Regulations Update, and Design Guidelines Services in an amount not to exceed $177,260. Passed, approved, and adopted this fourth day of October 2022.
Okay, thank you so much. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Any comments or discussion?
Just a couple, two or three. The things that they come up with, is that stuff that's automatically renewed each time this is done, like every six, eight years? Or are we expecting some big changes in?
It's things that we should update constantly. You have a certain amount of years, you know, that range from, or people might say anywhere from seven to 10, but it depends on what your city's doing. But as y'all recently seen, we presented y'all with a vision plan.
Right.
You know, we have all kinds of plans and this. I informed y'all a couple of years ago what was gonna come forward as far as our planning and the cost of it and where we work with this as the city moves forward. But what I would like to do, you know, this is inclusive of four different plans right here. We're making sure that goes along with, because you have to make sure these things are married to one another when you're doing your zoning subdivision regulations. Because this was, like it says, it's a management for the growth of our city throughout. But I won't, Ms. Hattaway, I don't want to steal her thunder. This is what she's here for, planning the vision. Come up and represent your department.
Wag your tail.
Show them what you do.
Yes, sir. This is the comprehensive plan, which, as the name suggests, is comprehensive. And typically it's done in five to 10 years, but you are supposed to look at it on an angle up there because it looks at your population existing and projected. It looks at your land use, how you wanna see the city grow in the future. It will look at our public facilities, our infrastructure, where are we deficient, where do we need to upgrade some of our utilities, where do we want to put infrastructure in the direction that we want to grow. It looks at our housing stock, our existing inventory, what do we need to do. I think as you mentioned yesterday, we need to look at affordable housing. A lot of people coming into the city, but we don't need to always concentrate on single family residential. How do we increase our housing stock that's affordable to everybody? Let's look at our transportation. As we mentioned yesterday, transportation is not just automobiles, it's public transit, it's walking, it's bicycling. So it looks at the whole entire city and how do we wanna move in the future. Also looks at the, I said, land use. What we wanna do is make sure that our zoning ordinance, which is our land use regulations and our subdivision regulations, implement what our future land use map says. Sometimes over time, they start diverging from each other. So we wanna make sure that what our land use plan says that the city wants to grow in is what our zoning ordinance is updating or implementing. So we wanna make sure there's no conflict. When we updated the public works, there's a lot to do about sidewalks and bicycle transportation. We wanna make sure that's included in our subdivision regulations, to make sure all of our land development regulations are concurrent with each other. So that's what this comprehensive plan update, plus the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations will do, make sure they all tie together seamlessly. And we will look at it on an annual basis.
Okay. Do they give you a timeframe on how long it would take them to do this study?
Yes, sir. It's 15 months.
Okay.
But it's a process and works, and it's not gonna happen overnight. And we wanna say that to our community, we know that. But the responsibility, the leadership of this team is to put this in place for our future growth, and that's what's taking place.
And one of the key issues in the proposal is the public outreach. And typically in the past, there's been just town hall meetings, but with social media and laptops and everything, we're doing more of a social media blast on this so anybody can have some input at any time. But we're also having town hall meetings. So making sure that everybody that wants input in the city's comprehensive plan will get it.
Okay.
And the time is a factor. We realize that. We have people who say negative things throughout here on Facebook and internet, and they talk about updating your comprehensive plan, where it wasn't time. But what we have done over the period of time that the United States smoked out and everybody does smoke now, we were preparing for our United States to open back up, our city, our state, it'll open back up. So when you look at the time factor that's in here, we will meet that instead of waiting exactly until that time to be in 12 years out instead of right on time with that. So everything, we are changing the vision plan and everything. We're making sure that it all goes together, and we lumped it together purposely. This was done by design to make sure that everything, like you say, she'll tell you that work against one another at a certain period of time. And then we change all the time. We change as councils change, you know, and they look in different directions. But we want to make sure we have plans on the table to where we deviate and we look at these things annually, it could be a smooth transition into what we are doing because they are gonna change. We know that. None of this is solid because we change, and it's a lot to move forward. One thing we aggressively got moved toward forward to is you look in different areas of the United States, many cars are getting ready to hit our streets. That's gonna be a totally different deal there. You're talking about something that waits more, you know? You're talking about getting the infrastructure prepared for electricity. We have a lot to get ahead of and to make sure we're maintaining that. We don't wanna be behind, and a lot of things, that's what this team has put together to do to make sure that we are out there. And that's why we have to be careful when it comes down to our revenue that comes in, that we utilize it, the way we structure that, the way we need to be able to move things instead of getting behind the costs. There's a lot of cities our size that can't prepare to do this, you know? So we're fortunate in the position we are.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Hunter. You mentioned a key point there. You said possibility when this council change, change, is there any way the new council might go a different direction? It's already moving.
No, it's the council do whatever they wanna do.
All councils go a different direction.
Okay, the reason I'm saying is because look at all these dollars been invested in these plans and stuff like that.
That's fine, but you know, and I understand that, but I understand local government, you know, people campaigning, they come in and teams, they come in to wipe out something somebody else put in place. Let's just be honest about it. This is politics.
Well, they did that on Broad Street when they were redoing Broad Street. First council was gonna put it in a certain way. Second council come in midway through the construction, stopped, redesigned it, and then finished it out the way they wanted it.
Well, what happened, a lot of things went on Broad Street is that the company that walked out on.
Oh, yeah.
It was ex-borough shop. I don't mind telling that. That was part of that problem in the construction company, so.
But both councils, though, had it designed totally differently.
One looked at what happened, they didn't want it because it failed, and engineering had to change, come in and change that work on that. That was 2007, that was my first council.
That's right.
And I had to deal, that was the whole thing. We was dirt.
Oh, yeah. I remember that.
It was dirt. You remember, there was a lot of side of the road.
Yeah, Angel was over there having to watch him every day. He was. They put the wrong dirt in the planters and everything else. I watched them. Yeah, you were there. Oh, yeah.
That's a site of moving government office site up to the old car site. It's a lot of major things that changed and a lot, and for people to understand that citizens are looking in one direction that they can't stand. Every four years, whoever sat in this seat at that time got either made that adjustment or walked away. That's just absolutely the way it is. You know, there's no ear fans and butt to body. It changed so hopefully what they're trying to do for the sake of the people that's here, that remain here, that you have a constant flow that's taken for sense and that people like. And I wish some of these people, let's just be honest about what's going on. You know, I like, I think it's much better for these young kids to see it and everything else. You look at this council chamber right now, you see people, and just like our work session, some people who were talking about running for office or wanna be in office are not here. They're not here to look at what's going on to see and learn how these actions take place so that they can see. Just don't come in and say, "Let's change this route." You know, that's against the citizens, to be honest with you. So you need to, this is a great time for those people to be taking a look and saying, "Well, I got opposition against this." You know, I could see it, or I could learn what's going on to keep them fro, so the city won't stop. And that's why, that's where we thrive at. That's why so many people, you know, we're working so much with Columbus and the surrounding areas, Sioux State and Fort Bend. Work with them. To have that, we have to cut the noise out and push it aside if we're gonna do the job we're supposed to do, and that's taking care of citizens and taking care of this place to make it the best place we can make it because it does. And that's what we are trying to present with these, with this documentation, to have the documents laid out better than ever before, that people can take and make it easy reading, easy listening, and open the doors for everybody to see. We bring in not only the positive part of it, but the criticism and all.
Yeah, it's part of it.
And try to put that into making this a better place for people to live at. That's what, we are goal oriented and task oriented to go along with that, to make sure that that happens. That's leaving egos and all disruptive personalities out of it, to try our best to do what we're supposed to be doing for the citizens.
Well, these companies here that come in to do these studies, they're not doing a study based on what we want or based on what we're asking for, based on what we're looking at. They're trying to show anybody who is sitting here or sitting there or sitting in these department head chairs where the city needs to head in their opinion. And then we look at it and make sure that it's workable for us at this timeframe, and then we try to put something together that will work for the next group that's behind us and so forth. And build forward, go in that direction, just like anybody does, you know, everybody And build forward, go in that direction, just like anybody does, you know, everybody loves sports now, but that's how you build a winning team is you start with certain segments and the coach keeps building on that. And that's what we're here to do is to take a study like this, look at it, implement what we can at that particular time that needs to be done. And then, you know, most of the time it'll be tweaked and worked on, but it'll continue to move forward. And that's what all the studies are done for. That's what these, you know, these drawings here are and everything.
Not to interrupt you, but that's what we have the public hearings for.
Right.
We direct them towards what our citizens wanna see.
That's right.
Not just what they, they can tell us what some of the best practices are, but we are trying to make sure.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not done what we want. It's done what our city needs.
That's right. For citizens, we want them involved to come and take a look and feel included. You know, and so many times what people have been feeling in certain parts of the city that they have neglected. Now, they don't show up and they don't come. It's nothing you can say.
Right.
But it's, the doors are gonna be open for everybody to be included with their opinions and what they see and what they like. You know, you get compliments, you get criticism, you get all of it. But you gotta take all that and work with it because a lot of it, it makes sense. And just because I may like something, that don't make it right. It could be someone else. If it's a good idea, we gotta have the door open to look at that. And if that fits within what we are trying to do, that's the way we look at that. You know, but we want them to understand what the laws and everything that goes along with these things within the city, what that applies to, you know, in certain areas of zoning, what you can have there and different things like that, R ones. Get them, we, like I say, the doors are opening now to have assemblies and have people here so we can have a public citizen academy. So they can come in and take a look at what governs us to do what we should be doing for them. And that's what this is all about, building a city around the people in the city.
And that's what I was talking about, you know, when you, I didn't want anybody to misunderstand what I meant.
Yes.
None of us at this table have a personal opinion that should matter to these people. It's what they, see, our city needs, districts need, the people need. Certain areas of town need certain zonings. Certain areas of town are gonna be developed certain ways in the future. Some areas, the infrastructure won't hold up what people might would like to see there, but it costs too much to put it there, so you build it in a new area. And you expand your city when the city needs expanding years from now. So all this is put into effect because our city is gonna grow in the next twenty, thirty, forty years. It's not gonna be locked in the way we are right now. Never will be that way. And you're gonna see multiple changes. We won't see some of those. But the people that live here that are young enough are gonna see a huge difference like we've seen in our lifetime here. But we've seen some large, some big steps with things that we haven't had, that we never had before. And it's gonna continue to do that, and that's what these studies are for, is to take us out into the future.
But we had to put ourselves in this and thankful, thankful to the good Lord, thankful for the city. We had to put ourselves in the place to do this because as y'all know this, these plans are costly.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So if you look and y'all have to say, would it be a better use for this particular revenue year or whatever? We're in a situation now where we have the revenue to try to do it all.
Yeah, we're very blessed.
At least get started. We're very blessed to be in the position we in. And that's where you have to structure your financing throughout the city so you can accomplish these different things. So that's what we are with.
Well, I just wanna say this and going back to the question Mr. Day asking, based on the answer Mr. Hunter stated, council's going to change. But one thing that we hope that the citizen realize now, the council makes decisions based on recommendation. But what I hope that we as a council have shown is that we try to lead with principal senate leadership with integrity, with compassion. And to all the citizen, if people who runs, and we all can attest to this council, some of the things that have been abused toward us, that's not true. But every citizen should realize that we want for our city, and I think all of us are planning on continuing to live here, is that principal senate leadership that leads with integrity and character. And going forward, whoever the council is, we as a community, the city should keep those persons accountable with them. Because this is not a gig that you get in to be grandiose or getting in for yourself to look at me. This is an opportunity that we chose to take to be able to lead with those integrity. And if anyone's that are not doing that in the future, then that's gonna be a problem. Now, I'm not saying we've all done the right things, but I can say this, they were truly mistakes. And we can admit those and we can learn from those and we can try not to do them again. But a mistake is not something that you say is a mistake if you're trying to hide and do it and you get caught. That's not a mistake because otherwise you would do it transparently. And if it doesn't work out, then it's an honest mistake. But I do wanna say this, we as a community, as we get older, we were talking about that this morning. We're not gonna be in this gig. I'm not saying we've done everything correctly. I'm not saying that we've always headed right on the mark. But what I am saying, the motives in our hearts was pure and right. And that's where that principal senate leadership starts. And if any group come in and wants to just radically change things that's not best for the citizen, we all need to be held accountable and should wanna be held accountable because this, let me tell you, it's not an easy gig and we're doing this to make a difference for this community. It's not about us. And as I always say, when they're shooting their arrows, this council has always spread its wings wider so they can get hit, but continue to be self sacrificial leaders. And that's what we hope that the citizen always want when these councils change. And I am going to say this, and you know, I've seen a lot of things since I've been in this position. And I have to question, was it really done for the right reason for this community? So let's keep each other accountable and particularly the leadership of the city. So with that said, we wanna call.
One thing that I'd like to add, Mayor Dish, we always say to the citizen here in Phoenix City, you don't have to sit in any gathering or any group, just come down to the city hall, see it for yourself and read it for yourself, you know, you get firsthand information. You don't have to go by what he says, she says, you know, just come down there and visit with the city hall and the clerk office. And just see it for yourself.
Principal senate leadership, principal senate leadership, integrity and character. We're gonna fumble sometime, but it won't be done intentionally. So with that said, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on on the engineering department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor, city manager to enter into an agreement with Stone and Sons Electrical Contractors Incorporated to provide pedestrian crossing improvements at the intersection of Broad Street and Dillingham Street in an amount not to exceed seventy-two thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-five cents. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Excuse me. Whereas the city of Phoenix City Engineering Department has received a quote from Stone and Sons Electrical Contractors Incorporated to provide all labor and materials associated with the new pedestrian signal system at the intersection of Broad Street and Dillingham Street. And whereas Stone and Sons Electrical Contractors Incorporated has provided a quote in the amount of seventy-two thousand, three hundred, twelve dollars, eighty-five cent. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement with Stone and Sons Electrical Contractors Incorporated to provide the aforementioned services as per their proposal. Passed, approved and adopted this fourth day of October, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. We have the motion and the second. Any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council on the fire department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor, city manager to sign and enter into an agreement with Watley Construction to construct a fire training facility behind Fire Station One in an amount not to exceed two million, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars, two million, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City Fire Rescue is in need of a fire training facility for the fire department. And whereas the bid opening for the fire training facility was held on Tuesday, August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas Watley Construction was the single responsible bidder with a base price of three million, eighty-five thousand dollars. And whereas Watley Construction has offered one hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars in value engineering deductions, which will reduce the base bid price to two million, nine hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into an agreement with Watley Construction to perform the work as outlined in the plans and specifications for said project in an amount not to exceed two million, nine hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars. Passed, approved and adopted this fourth day of October, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Council, we have all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have the motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Comments, questions or discussion?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I remember nine years ago, we was talking about a facility such as this nine years ago. And I'm glad to see, to live to see that. We got the, Chief had the green light to go ahead and get started on this project. Can she elaborate for the citizens of Phoenix City? Because this is a high dollar item.
Yes, it is, I thought I was.
How well do we know? Get to the, if you can get to the mic.
It's not very real part of the past, but like what you were talking about, we all go. Some decisions that were made in the past drive what we're doing today for our community. When ISO comes in and grades, two of the main areas that we're deficient in that we only got fractions of a point are the stations, the three districts that we have, we're deficient in those areas now. Because of annexations that were done in the past, we've got to have three additional fire stations in this community. Not to mention the training facility, the training facility not having a fixed facility that we can perform live burns in. That's the main thing. That's another area where we only got fractions of a point. We have to plan throughout the year with every other paid department and volunteer department in this community, excuse me, in the state, for a tractor trailer to come in here that we can perform live burns in. So we have to schedule that in advance every year. And we have eighteen hours that we have to perform every employee in a fixed facility. Sometimes the burner don't work and just operates off LPG. Sometimes it doesn't work. We have to make the best out of what we can, okay? So this is an area where we can do something about that. The fire stations, the three fire stations, the personnel to operate those three fire stations, the trucks that are gonna be required, the equipment that's gonna be required, the salaries, the gear, that's all gonna be millions of dollars per fire station. This is millions of dollars also. But we felt like this was the least costly of all of those projects to try to get done at this point, especially before we leave. And so this is not only gonna be something for the community, but it's gonna be, like I said yesterday, it's gonna be a major morale boost for our employees. Our officers have to be very creative with what we do because we don't have those facilities. We have a classroom and that's it. So this is, and not saying that we did anything like we're talking about yesterday. I didn't intentionally do anything to try to design something that was not gonna be cost effective, but at the same time, very functional for everything that we need. That building, that building is gonna house the offices for training, it's gonna have the classroom that we need. And it's also gonna have a two-way area for the trucks that we've gotta get out of the weather that we can also get credit for ISO. That drill tower's gonna sit in the middle of that site, just like I showed you yesterday. And I can't think of anything that the fire college requires for a permanent training facility that we will not be able to do in this, in this training drill ground. So, I mean, if there's any questions that you, that you need to ask me?
This is a big deal. It's a huge, it's a huge deal for us. As we see, you're talking about three million dollars. This is really a huge deal. And Chris, since you mentioned the ISO, could you please explain that to, not saying people don't understand it, but they probably are and we don't wanna take the chance that anyone doesn't understand it. So could you explain how critical and important it is for us to have the proper ISO?
Well, yes, sir. So the lower the score, one at the end, the lower the score, the better your insurance rate, your homeowners and the business owners' insurance is. They come here, they don't wanna do business here, won't live here. Unfortunately for those customers who, we have a two slash X or a two slash nine is what it formally was known. That nine is the areas where those homeowners are because of that annexation that I talked to you about before. They exceed five miles from a fire station. Those homeowners, they know what we're talking about because they don't get the maximum credit that those that live within the city get the two.
The insurance is elevated, yeah.
In order for us to maintain the lowest score possible, I mean, we're graded, we're graded fire prevention activities, public education activities, we're graded on personnel, we're graded on equipment that we send to a call. We're graded on the number of trucks that we have in reserve. We're graded on the number of ladder trucks that we have, the number of ladder trucks we have in reserve. Well, you can understand, we can't meet every one of those requirements. But going from a three slash nine to a two slash nine, lowering that one aspect of the grade, I mean, that's something remarkable, but we've gotta maintain it. And so this is another portion of that grade. A fixed facility, you get thirty-five points for that. Now, I can't explain this whole grading system to you because it goes in fractions and points, okay? So the overall score is thirty-five points for a fixed facility. We got eighteen, I'm excuse you, we got eleven. And that eleven was just being able to bring that trailer in and get those minimal points for that. We were trying to get Chief Hunter to let us have y'all's do events in it. We're trying to get him to let us do that, but he wouldn't go for it, so. We can, and that's another area that we've used as a fixed facility. We used that building down there to get some points. But this right here, behind Station One, is centrally located. The guys, they get there, they can train if they get a call. We're not on the far south end of town and we're not on the far north end of town. So our response times, that's another area we're graded. Everything we do is watched and graded by ISO. And so it's very important that we make up these deficient areas where we can.
Okay.
Personnel is gonna always be an issue. It's gonna ebb and flow. It's gonna be like a roller coaster. We can only do the best we can do there. But some of these other areas with these buildings, that's where we try to tell you. Every year when Chief Hunter houses, giving these reports, those fire stations, that's gonna be millions as well. So, I mean, it's unfortunate at this time, the inflation is driving the cost of some of this, but who knows when this is gonna come back down.
Yeah.
And it's just fortunate, I might not take Chief Hunter's thunder, but it's just fortunate that the city can possibly do this.
To be able to purchase this and not have to borrow the money.
It's all about, at any point, I told you about fade it out, I was gonna fade it all the way out. But I can tell you, it's something proud. Phoenix City, well, the people know it now. We have a reputation throughout the United States. And through fire service and public administration, through National Fire Academy, New York City, being able to go through, a lot of people look at it and just say, firemen. Just like a lot of people look at me and say, I'm the fireman running the city. Well, we are trained and not just fire safety, the public administration. And through Fire College and tough schools, you know, the mayor, that gets up and back to work, we plan to do what's our plan. And we are recognized throughout by being here from Phoenix City. And Chris, Chief, when we arrive at the Fire College, they always save the seats in front for Phoenix City. Because they knew we was coming there to represent this city and that's what we could. I mean, that reputation carries to the day. I still work with Fire College. I'm still instructing with them. But for them.
Could you talk into the mic? He's trying to.
They favor us.
He's trying to hear back.
Can you hear me better now?
Sir, you wanna come up some? I see you're trying to, pull your chair up. Yeah, come on up.
Can you hear me better now? Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay, they favor Phoenix City a lot and throughout, so a lot of the training will be pushed in this area because they know we always have trained well, right? Had the opportunity to change, we had three, as big as the United States are, we had three chiefs, Chief Brandon out of New York, Bruno Ceni out of Phoenix and Dr. Carl Holmes. I was able to study under them with public administration and a consortium from here. This is a proud day for Phoenix City because they helped us a lot and they especially helped me as the chief. And we developed a lot of, lot of people here within this city. And I'll tell y'all this, throughout this, throughout this state and people that know Chief Kennedy, her knowledge and intelligence is second to none in the fire service. A lot of people, we went through a lot of things in the United States as far as a lot of bad things, looking at people who fit the description of where they should be. And she's broken down all those barriers to get to the point to lead this department forward where we should be headed to. So this right here is a great thing to bring them here because we went through some of the toughest training and having to go other places, staying up there in La Quinta, staying here and whatever, it's gonna bring economic development also with it to the city as people come here to train. You know, they always wanted to know. We would get, they would always ask that, how do y'all do it in Phoenix City? See, because it was competitive here, you know, you went out to do the best you can. And we, a lot of people need to understand, in that particular profession, you get to see people at their worst. So you have another part in the preventive part of it to always get out there and try to educate people on how to stay away from that. And it's an involvement where you're dealing with people throughout in every segment of your community. So we try to make sure it's, people understand, there's a lot more to it than jumping on a red truck and spraying some water on other stuff. It's a whole lot of things in between that. There's a whole lot of things in between that. And, and now they have the facilities to be able to demonstrate this to people. And, and it's a dream come true. And it was left there, it was one of the last things, because I've been city manager fourteen years. I did not want to be accused of favoring the fire department. In fact, they probably had it harder than anyone else. And we, as you'll notice, usually when we're doing big deals, we're talking about borrowing money. All this money was saved. This is cash deal here. This is no money borrowed from anywhere to build this facilities. And just like we are finishing up our public administration building, the buildings that we have done with engineering and IT, the things that we've done throughout departments, parks and wrecks, everybody, every department was taken care of before the fire department.
And not borrowing money.
And not borrowing money. So that is the thing, as far as what we do with our revenue, to put it in place to make sure that we can provide the right things because it's all about the citizens.
That's right.
It's, it's all about providing the things and, and Phoenix City being a place of our size, being able to take care of the things, especially with the growth. And as she was talking about, these things has got to come along in the future with the growth of this city where we have to deal with developers that's stretching, stretching things so far out to where it's got to be inclusive of these fire stations within these developments to make sure that we can take care of all, all the, all the people we're supposed to take care. That's what it's coming down to. So it's a lot, we're at that point to where all these things got to be discussed way before time to make sure that we, they understand that you can want to build and develop wherever you want, but the city has got to be able to be in a joint venture with you to make sure that, for the safety of the citizens.
That's right. Well, a building like this is going to help several ways. It's going to make your firemen safer because they're going to get better training.
That's correct.
And I would hope, and I feel sure, as Chief Kennedy said yesterday, the surrounding areas that have volunteer fire departments and all of them, you come in here and get some specialized troops, you know, as they need it. And some of them probably need a lot more of it because they are volunteers. And there's some of them can't come on a certain day that the burn truck is in their area or here. That can be used whenever we see that it needs to be used by anybody. And as our needs change over the years, I'm sure stuff can be added to that. That can change it to, you know, whether NFIC and chemicals or just whatever the issues could be. It's not just going to always be a fire. We have seen that in this, in this world. A lot of things come up, you know, that are man-made now that can be introduced. And this is just going to make our, the biggest thing, the first person you got to keep safe is the fire person that's coming to the rescue. They can't do the rescue, they're not safe. So if they come in to get me, it's over for me too at that point. It really is. So they've got to be safe. They've got to have the right equipment, the right training, the right everything.
You want them to be prepared.
If they can't help me at that accident or whatever, it's done. So they have to be at that point. And it's just very blessed that we can do that for our citizens because that's ultimately who's going to get the results from the firemen. And EMS or anybody that uses that can be trained. And even these outlined areas of Smith Station and La Donia, Sealed and places, places like that that, you know, can use it and I'm sure will use it. It's just, it's just very good for everybody's ability. And it all starts right here in Phoenix City.
Exactly.
And it's good that we can do that in this area because we're not the largest entity in this area right here. But having something like that is going to make us one of the best ones.
Huge, big deal.
It really will. So I'm just, I'm tickled to death.
Well, so we currently, because we don't have the facilities to train here, we currently have to send our, our employees, our new employees that are going to recruit schools, we have to send them away from here. We don't have to send them to the Fire College, which is a major expense, where like what Chief Hunter was talking about, you got to send them up there, you got to put them up in a hotel. You got to, you got to feed them for, for ten weeks for the fireside. You got to feed them every, three meals a day. We got to cover all, all those expenses if I have to send them to the Fire College. Well, because we had gotten creative years ago and had a fire training consortium, and like I said yesterday, that's primarily Auburn, Opelika, Phoenix City, the Lynette, Lafayette, Alex City, places like that. But Alex City moved on. Alex City has their own training facilities now. So we can send our recruits to these surrounding areas. Well, now, this is something that we've been pushing for. We can bring them here. We don't have to send our instructors out. We don't have to send our employees out. We can hold not only recruit schools, but any other type of, with these facilities, I can't think of anything that the Fire College would not approve for us to teach in Phoenix City. Our, our ultimate goal was to have classes here, teach anything with recruit school, but also to be a regional training facility at some point. They have those throughout the state of Alabama. But not everybody has something like this. So, I mean, what Chief Hunter said, this is a very big deal, is a very big deal for us. And it will be for the whole state of Alabama if, if we can bring those, those students here.
Well, I would imagine if, and I don't know anything about firefighting, but if you go out to a fire, I'm not saying somebody does something wrong, but it's a situation that you, that they were never trained exactly for. And it didn't go as smoothly as it needs to go. You can come back and address something like that to where you can be prepared for that next time. Because when you go off somewhere to school, you're only going to learn what they teach you. And you can only learn for so many hours because it's only available for a short period of time. But this can be done every day in stages as it needs to be, or, you know, certain group or whatever. So it just makes good sense that, that everything should be better and smoother and operate more efficiently and safer is the big key because of this. And it's all about people's safety. I mean, that's, you know,
Number one.
That's, that's absolutely where it has to start, is safety.
Number one.
And end with safety. It has to. That's the thing.
We have over two hundred hours that we have to maintain every year. So the stuff they've learned in recruit school, we've got to continue that. Every year, they're training every day, whether it's in a classroom setting or whether it's outside doing something. But a, a, a good example of what you're talking about is, let's say they didn't catch the hydrant exactly right. That sounds like a silly, a silly thing, but there's actually a heart to that. And so you only have so many hours in recruit school to do that. Well, when we, when we got finished with recruit school, if you didn't do something quite right, that's exactly what you did. You went up here to the park, right up here, and that's all you did was make those continuous laps catching a fire hydrant, loading the hose back up. And it's not, that's not an easy thing to do.
Starting all over.
But you see those, there's some examples of things that can be done in that tower. I mean, everything that we have to perform annually, all our C E Us, there's, I, I can't think of anything we won't be able to do in this facility to include driving those trucks around, setting the trucks up, or a multi-story building, the ladder, I mean, you name it, hose evolutions, fighting. We can do it in Phoenix City.
And we can control it now because you have to make sure, when you go into these schools, you have to make sure your instructors are trained well and don't go too far with things. I went to a school, you remember back in Smoke Diver?
That's right.
I fell, they outlawed the school. It was so hot, your clothes would melt. I'm telling you, it was outlawed.
Well, we would have...
I was told to come back here is number one when I was sent away. And that's what I did. We went to, and Chris, I tell you, when they was up, it was, it was, it could be horrible the way certain personalities could get out of the way when they are training people. Instead of training these people, you can hurt people also. So we get to make sure everybody stay in compliance now with what they're supposed to do because it is not a joke when you, when you're trying to get to the top and deal with, deal with these things.
Well, this gives us the opportunity to work with other organizations at the same time by choice. You could actually have ambulance people come in here and set up. When you have these mock drills somewhere, you'd have a mock drill right there and operate everything that you need to do, showing everything. And then the same thing if you have to, you know, if you're planning on like, thank goodness we don't live in the area where you have a lot of catastrophes, but just like that hurricane down there. If we lived in an area that had prepared for something like that, ever so often, you'd be able to get all the organizations within a, you know, a hundred mile radius to come together somewhere and be able to train for that for what those people down there are having to go through right now with, you know, just search and rescue, with trying to get the power back on, trying to get the water and everything back up in the sewage. I mean, that, that's huge.
We train...
And it's all about people's safety and people's lives.
That's right.
And that's where we, we have to keep that foremost and forefront.
Well, well, it's not only that, Ms. Bailey. When you see people, if you're working with housing authorities, you're working with, one of the goals that we had to do in school was basically when you have a terrible situation, that personnel there could walk in, come in with a briefcase. When they come in, I still carry one to this day. When you come in with that briefcase, inside that briefcase, you're supposed to be able to take care of that family and every unit. You're supposed to be able to deal with hotels and motels. You've been to, deal with food banks, Red Cross. You're supposed to do with any, any person there in, or any organization, whether it's the power company, whether it's the gas company. And Chief, I tell you that, these are the things that we, it's so much more than what people think. And you have to be trained and you have to be ahead on these different things you have to do for people. We just trained down in Dalton, trained with their department a lot on the same thing you're talking about. Mainly, what people don't understand, what goes through we every day. This morning I was on the bypass purposely. Purposely, it's seven thirty to see because every once in a while I have to get out there to see how the traffic really is still flowing. And it was congested throughout. Well, when you was coming in from eighty to two eighty, going out, we had an accident this morning right there to a, on ramp, um, this morning that was there. But people don't realize these eighteen wheelers, what they're carrying, what you talked about earlier, what goes through the city. We have railers going through this city. We have planes constantly flying over this city, right into Columbus. You know, and you're dealing with all kinds of threats to what, what can happen here in this area. So you, you have to be prepared and well-trained on these things. And you have to have what, we got eleven volunteer departments still that's basically right around us.
How many, eleven?
We had eleven, used to be eleven, twelve, right around us. It still should be that number, as a chief, okay, that we basically train with. And to be honest with you, we have some good volunteer departments. We have good relationships with them too. We have real good, dealing with the police department. See, in public safety, it used to be a time where you have adversaries. And police and fire didn't always, you know, they're fighting for the, they didn't understand they're fighting for the same profit or revenue. So one of our goals two years ago was to make sure that we always work for each other and when we got along, got along with one another. You know, because when you get out there to serve these citizens, you can't be out there and not have decent relationships with one another to serve them, whether it's sheriff department, police, whether it's ambulance service that's providing that. You have to have relationships that do so things that transpire smoothly when you're working with people. There's something we get deep into, into detail with. So it's, it's one of those things I, I talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Hunter, Mayor, I like to say this. Under nine years, I've been on council, signed quite a few resolutions. As I look at these high-dollar items, from the police vehicles to these buildings, the things we purchased, we still maintain our minus double A rating. And you said we didn't have to borrow any money for this particular item. That is a blessing. That's planning right there. I like that.
Thank you all so much. With that said, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Excuse me, Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And proceeding on, Council on the Fire Department is a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to accept a quote and sign a contract with Fire Training Structures LLC for the design and construction of a live fire in confined space training tower in an amount not to exceed five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City wishes to engage in the services of Fire Training Structures LLC to design plans and construct the live fire and confined space training tower for the fire department. And whereas Fire Training Structures LLC has provided a quote in the amount of five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and five dollars for design and final construction services in the amount not to exceed five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign the contract with Fire Training Structures LLC for the above referenced project in the amount not to exceed five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Passed, approved and adopted this fourth day of October, 2022.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion from Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Comments or discussion?
Yes, sir, I want to ask one question. Mr. Hunter?
Yes, yes, sir.
When you sign this contract, they cannot increase, uh, contract. It's locked in.
No, it should, it should be locked in, Mr. Day.
Okay.
Yes, sir, it should be locked in.
Things change, you know, just with...
I also want to explain where it's being built, Chief. You want to talk about this because there's a lot of things they don't do in this particular area. So we want to talk about, because you always, I didn't know that, sometimes whose contract, where, who's building this, who was building this. Want to tell that they'll just build these around...
Yeah, Wally Construction, so this is a two-phase project, okay? So Wally Construction's going to do the training classroom, offices, engine bay. They're, they're doing that. There's a special engineer who's coming out of Arizona that designs that, that drill tower. Because we have to, we're setting it on fire, that's what we're committed. So, among other things, but he's out of Arizona that will design it and bring it here and construct it. So the first thing that's got to go in is the infrastructure. The ground's got to be prepared in order for that, that structure to sit where it's going to be located. So Wally's going to be doing that part of the, the project.
Okay. And we would like to encourage the public if they would like to come and see these renderings. I, I don't know where they would be set up, but you will be afforded that opportunity. I guess you could call the clerk office or Chief Kennedy or somebody to find out. But we do want to encourage you all to come out and look at this. It's, it's a big, big day.
I hope we can show them on, on beam also, if they can get some shots of them before it's over with.
Yeah, but this is a big, big deal.
Big deal.
That's right. Thank you, Chief Ken. Anything else?
I do have one, one small comment, Mayor. And Chief Kennedy talked about the location of the new facility. And I know site selection was a, a great deal. And then it took some time to just kind of finalize where the new facility was set. But to be centralized in the middle part of Phoenix City, and we are a community of one, is, is most important. We'll be able to reach each and every citizen in our parameters of how, and then again, having the accessibility, you know, not only from the thirteenth street, Crawford Road, it's going to have an entry on, what, what was that street?
Nineteenth Court.
Nineteenth Court, to get in and out. But to be centralized in the middle part of our city is, is a great thing.
That's the main thing when we train. I mean, like the police department, the police department has to go all the way to the south end of, of our city in order to train. And they've got to meet requirements too to give back to wherever they're called, where, where they're going. It's the same for us. I mean, and so it, it is just amazing that it worked out the way it did for it to be behind Station One. Y'all had approved for us to buy the property that was, fingers crossed, property that was further behind the station so that it gags a little bit more room. So like I said yesterday, it was all about timing. And, and it's, it's worked out the way it was supposed to work out and then the timing, timing was supposed to work out.
Yep, timing is everything.
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, with that being said, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Excuse me, Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Council now on the Police Department. We have a resolution in reference to declaring property and evidence as surplus to be disposed of at the landfill or destruction at the Auburn University incinerator facility. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Police Department of the City of Phoenix City has several items which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended authorized the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the attached list of described property and evidence is hereby declared surplus to be disposed of at the landfill or destruction at the Auburn University incinerator facility. Passed, approved and adopted this fourth day of October, 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've heard the resolution. This time I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Council now on the Utilities Department. We have a resolution in reference to declaring six vehicles surplus to be sold as scrap. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama Utilities Department has six vehicles which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas section eleven forty-three fifty-six... And whereas section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded property. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the described six vehicles listed on the attached memo are unneeded and are hereby declared surplus to be sold as scrap. Passed, approved and adopted this fourth day of October, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, council, we've all have heard the resolution. I would like to, at this time, ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, council, also on the utilities department. We have a resolution in reference to declaring pumps and equipment surplus to be sold as scrap or disposed of at the city landfill. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama Utilities Department has pumps and equipment which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded property. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the described pumps and equipment listed on the attached memo are hereby declared surplus to be sold as scrap or disposed of at the city landfill. Passed, approved and adopted this fourth day of October, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Thank you again, Mrs. Lee, for the reading of that resolution. Counsel, we've all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Councilwoman Johnson and a second by Councilman Day. We have a motion in the second. Any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And council, now proceeding on the board appointments. We do have a, the improvement in district brickyard project. We do have a person that I would like to ask that we make a motion to reappoint Joe R. Carter, senior, to the improvement district brickyard pot. May I have a motion to reappoint?
Motion to reappoint.
All right, we have the motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day.
It don't matter.
We have the motion in the second. You have that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Call for the vote?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Lee?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
We do also have a tree commission appointment. It is a reappointment. But council, as we discussed on yesterday, I would like to ask that we table this to give this person a little bit more time to see if they would want to continue to serve on this tree commission board. So with that, I would like to ask for a motion to table this reappointment. May I have a motion to?
Motion to table.
All right, motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second? Second, Councilman Gordy. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, council, at this time, I'd like to call on our attorney, Mr. Jimmy Graham. Mr. Graham?
Mayor and council, we have two claims on the agenda today. The first one is a subrogation claim filed by auto owners insurance for City Gates Church. Um, we have a contract in our utilities department. Um, and, and this is where sewer overflowed. We have a, a contract with AMIC, which is Alabama Insurance, excuse me, Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation. Um, and once they receive this claim under the contract, they take it over. And my recommendation on this claim is to defer any other action to Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation and to authorize the payment of the thousand dollars deductible that is required under our contract with them.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation of our attorney. I ask that we make a motion to approve that recommendation.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion with Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
The second claim, Mayor, is a notice of claim filed by the Hayes Law Firm on behalf of Emmett Bennett. Um, Mr. Bennett, um, has complained to the city about a drainage easement that we have. And, um, he thinks that the city should maintain what he owns, not just the easement. And, um, he had come before mayor and council and, you know, presented his case. And, um, he wasn't satisfied with the answers that the mayor gave. So we've gone to this law firm and they have filed a notice of claim. Uh, you've got memorandums, uh, from myself and Jim McCune on our liability as far as this type of situation is concerned. And based on the Alabama law, uh, my recommendation is to deny the claim.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the recommendation. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve, uh, the, our city attorney recommendation. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, council?
Mayor, let me ask one question on that. The pictures, it has been updated. It, uh, on yesterday, it doesn't look like what it looks like in the, in this photo. The property that Mr. Bennett is.
Oh, it looks. His adjoining neighbor has gone down and cleaned out his part of the, uh, property and he has built a fire pit and they, um, uh, pick, put a picnic table down there. And, um, you know, it, it looks very nice, but, um, Mr. Bennett's not willing to do that.
Which is the same property?
Yes. Yeah, they, each property owner owns to the middle of that easement.
Right. Yep, exactly. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Proceeding on now, council, on the city manager. Is a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to make application for grant assistance from the U.S. Department of Transportation for the Reconnecting Communities Pilot, also known as RCP, program for a planned study on the Crawford Road thirteenth street corridor. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City is committed to improving the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Phoenix City. And whereas the U.S. Department of Transportation is soliciting applications for the Reconnecting Communities Pilot, RCP, program, which will award funds on a competitive basis for projects that reconnect communities by removing, retrofitting or mitigating highways or other transportation facilities that create barriers to community connectivity, including to mobility, access or economic development. And whereas the RCP program is offering funding in the form of planning grants, which will fund the study of removing, retrofitting or mitigating an existing facility to restore community connectivity, to conduct public engagement and other transportation planning activities. And whereas the city has identified the Crawford Road thirteenth street corridor between U.S. Highway two eighty and the Chattahoochee River as an ideal candidate for the RCP program. And whereas the RCP program is an eighty percent grant with a twenty percent cash match required. And whereas the grant request is for four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the filing of said application, including all understandings and assurances contained therein, and directs and authorizes its mayor and city manager to act in connection with the application and to provide such additional information as may be required. Be it further resolved that the City of Phoenix City shall provide the city's portion of the match for a total of eighty-eight thousand dollars. Passed, approved and adopted this fourth day of October, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Councilman Day, second, Councilwoman Johnson. Comments? Discussion? Okay. If not any, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jason, right there. You want to go over like we did yesterday?
Yeah, yeah.
You want to talk about this? This is, this is another one of the things right, right down the street.
Come on, Mr. Halloway.
Uh, right down the street from here, we need to make sure the citizens know we just was awarded seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Go down the street from where we are going for this particular one. And this right here with this, if we are lucky enough, are fortunate enough to accomplish this, this could lead to millions or more dollars in grants. So, you know, if you want.
Mr. Halloway?
Yes, sir.
Speaking to the mic.
As.
Pull it down. Get you a stool, one.
And, and as part of, um, what, what the engineering and the Pentagon Economic Development Department is doing is really looking at our, our street network and trying to include our transportation as far as walkability and making it more bite-friendly, making, looking at the access management so we can improve the economic development along these corridors. The first part of that was a cap grant, which is a transportation alternative program grant that we just received for the fourteenth street corridor. I think it goes tonight. Money don't go as far as it, as it used to, as we all know. And part of that grant will be the street lighting, the increased sidewalks and a pipeline to coincide with what we did in front of Judicial Center. And then we'll, um, go to phase two and continue that stretch. Then we mentioned yesterday, we might also be looking around about at that Five Points area. So we've got a lot of, um, good ideas that we're looking at for the thirteenth street and the fourteenth street corridor and Crawford Road. What this is, is the Reconnecting Communities Pilot, Pilot Program through the Department of Transportation and as part of the infrastructure, um, build that, that was passed. And it is actually a planning grant. So we are looking at reconnecting the communities, making it, um, easier for, for residents that live on that corridor to walk to jobs, bike to jobs, recreation, food, um, medical access, anything that people needs to do. You don't necessarily need to get in a car. A lot of our population has one vehicle available to them or maybe none. Car ownership is very expensive. So we're trying to make our community a little bit more accessible for people that have difficulty with car ownership. Or maybe just for health and exercise, choose to walk or choose to bike. And this is a, it's an eighty percent planning grant, twenty percent cash match. We're hoping that if we get this, it'll set us up to apply for the construction, which is a larger pot of money. It's still a twenty percent local cash match, but we can add other federal funds to, to the match requirement. But, um, they will provide us with three alternatives of how we can make thirteenth street Crawford Road corridor more accessible. They'll give us a cost benefit analysis on what each alternative, um, will, will give us and what kind of economic impacts. We'll see if we do some of this on road improvement. So we're very excited about the application. I think it can make some big changes for, for the City of Phoenix City.
What, do you know what kind of timeframe, how long before we know something?
I do not know how long. Like I said, this is the pilot program. I really don't know how, any idea of how many own. This is the cause of country. So I don't know how many jurisdictions are actually, um, applying for it. So hopefully it'll be a quick turnaround. It might require additional information, I'd say.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, council? Thank you, Mrs. Halloway.
I'd like to say, this is another part of the aggressive campaign that we own, you know, even over the day when we met, you know, we met this past week with, um, it's Day set up a meeting with Congressman Rogers, personnel and some of these people came down and that turned out to be an excellent meeting with people and getting a good understanding what's coming from that direction. We had people also in for the state that was evaluating things that we already had in place as far as the demolition of the fighting areas that we have. So we're trying to make sure the state and feds have a focus on Phoenix City right now. And we seem to be getting good cooperation around with that, bringing them here. So we can make sure we get the best that we can get for this city. And we seem to be accomplishing quite a bit right now.
It's all about the citizens.
It's a blessing. It's a blessing.
About the citizens. All right. Thank you, Mr. Halloway. Thank you, Mr. Hana. Any other comments or discussion? Call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thanks to council. Uh, thank all the department head. And, uh, we certainly have a lot to be thankful of. Uh, a lot of great things are happening. We have a great community. We have great people in this community. We have a great team. So we are very, very grateful. So with that said, any council member has anything they would like to add or take away? Okay, if not, Mr. Hana, anything?
All right. Just like to thank everybody for all the hard work that you're doing and moving forward. That's what we will be doing. We have a commitment and, um, that's what we should be following, the commitment that we have to the city and these citizens. So, and like I promised you all a couple of weeks ago, you know, everybody need to, they pay us to do a job and we're going to make sure we earn our, our keep. That's what we're doing and stay aggressive and keep challenging each other. Like Mayor always say, we must always challenge each other.
You've got to push each other.
So anything that's there, and I think we need to, we, we don't, we, we got to talk more to the citizens because there's so much misinformation that's out there. And that's one of my concerns that when we do have the opportunity to be on beam, where people, and a lot more people view this than what, what people really know. They view and they want to hear it from here. So as many things that we can bring to them and show them, they can understand how this government operates. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hana. Uh, so thanks to all the department head. We certainly thank this community. We, we thank every citizen. And again, as it's been stated and it will continue to be stated, that everything is for the concern of people who live in this community. That's, that's the whole purpose. And as I stated earlier, we, we want to have people who is going to have principal senate leadership. And, uh, I just want to say thank you all so much to this council. We have a great council. Uh, we have great people. We have a great community. And let's be part of the solution and not part of the problem. So I do want to say thank you all for lifting this community because we always say we want to be a lifter and a leaner. And I think with some of the things that you have heard and seen that we are certainly lifting this community. And do want to encourage you all citizens, please come down and, and, you know, look at some of these renderings and things. It's exciting time for Phoenix City and we thank you all for being a part of it and may God continue to bless us. And we certainly thank CTV Bean for bringing this. So with that said, we do stand adjourned. Thank you.